Thank you for coming. I know a lot of people maybe don't even know we're having this school. If this is an informal meeting, I'm Cindy Yohoff, and so I'm Senator for this area. And believe it or not, Memphis is one of my favorite communities because I think it's, it exemplifies the great rural life. It's a good town, people support it, you still have business establishments. I mean, you're everything that you wish every other community had. And now we're at risk of losing some of that. And my fear is, I'll have a lot of fears. Number one, I think that every county should have a place for elderly people to go. And also a place for people who might need rehabilitation temporarily because most of us can't do that at home. In the last couple of years, my mother and my stepmother were both in a local nursing home. And even though it was nearby, still it was difficult to get there. And I know that the nursing homes have had incredible pressure, incredible pressure through the last couple of years. And so we have almost a perfect storm of negatives that are creating, you know, a severe pressure on places like our nursing homes, or a hospital. Personally, I believe, as I say, we have somewhere local. I mean, the value of our lives here should be at least equal to the value of the people that live in the city. Not to be, I'm not against city bullivers, but I do feel that, you know, there's quite a lot of attention sometimes paid to people who live in the urban area because they have a greater population. But, okay, you know, we have people that have too. And I think that people who are in vulnerable positions, like in nursing homes, people working in shelter workshops, they're kind of at the bottom of the list, in my opinion. And so I know that, I know that every nursing home is under a lot of pressure right now. And there's a combination of factors that create that pressure. One, the majority of your residents are probably Medicaid clients. Medicaid is not a very good payer, so to speak. And I'm not a big government fan by any stretch of the imagination. So I feel like government tends to say, oh, you know, get on this program because we're going to take care of everything. Well, then, you know, inevitably, you have a lot of people that get on that program. And then you start figuring out, hey, that takes a lot of money. And so then they start dollar and dimeing you and disallowing things that should be paid for. And so our nursing home residents who are paid for by Medicaid, it's pretty much my understanding that you lose money on every one of them every single day. And if they have a very high level of care that they need, you lose more. Because there's just so many things that Medicaid does not pay for. So if eighty percent of your residents, and that's about a common percentage, if eighty percent of your residents in your nursing home are paid through Medicaid, you know, you don't have to be a math wizard to understand that that's not a good thing. So you have that problem. Then the nursing home, in turn, has to raise prices on the other people to try to make up for that loss. And because what else are they going to do? You have to have enough money to stay in business. So that puts pressure on those residents. During COVID, people did not put their loved ones in the nursing home if they had any other way that they could manage because they couldn't go see them. So then your nursing home had to run with less than, you know, an optimal number of people. And then, you know, the people who work in the nursing home had an incredible stress placed on them because I had a residential care at one point, and I loved the place. But the people that worked there, you know, they're connected to the people that are living there, and they're trying to help them have a good life for their remaining years. And the pressure became immense. Because a lot of those people, you know, became depressed. Their family couldn't come see them, or you had to do that thing where you stand out and yell in the window. And everybody has on a mask. So then, you know, even I, I'm not ready for the nursing home yet, but close some days. You know, when you're trying to communicate with people with a mask on, it's just so hard. And a lot of residents were kept in their own room, so they're not, you know, around each other. Now, they were a very high-risk group of people, so I understood that you had to have, you know, pretty stringent protection. I understood that. But it just made it very hard on the people that worked there and the people that lived there. So people got out of working there. I think something else that adds to the problem, which is sort of out there a little bit, but a lot of our people working in the nursing home might be single mothers, and they may be on Medicaid themselves. And I'd say the government does one thing well, and that is to make sure you can't do it. They can't do it, but they're going to make sure you can't do it either. So what they, if they impose rules on people about how many hours they can work, and if you work too many hours, then they take everything away from you. So then people quit their job. So I mean, you know, we just, we have a combination of things that needs to change. And I met with several of the nursing homes from the northern part of our state. They're all in the same, they're all in the same basket. And so I don't know where we're at in the idea of closing your nursing home, but I do know there's thirty-seven people in there or something like that. And I know how difficult it is to try to make a decision to uproot thirty-seven people and try to find somewhere nearby for them to live. And it would be my goal to try to get an understanding of the current environment. I mean, at a high level, I do understand it. I have talked to people in the governor's office. I do feel that if your nursing home closes, you know, your hospital is pretty well connected to it. So then they're already under pressure also. And then you have your two main employers, other than your school. And so then your community becomes at risk. So this is not just a one-tier thing. This is a whole, a whole basket, in my opinion. So I don't know, I do know several of you, but what I'm trying to, what I'd like to know from you, I'd like to hear your thoughts. And then I'd like to try to find a way to get a reprieve from this. I know that staffing is an issue and money is an issue. And so then that brings the question, where can we find that? And my, my argument to the governor's office is, you know, you might think this is just one place, but this is the entire rural part of Missouri, which is the majority of Missouri. So one way or the other, you're going to have a cascading series of bad things. And during the meeting I had with some of the nursing homes, I, we had this meeting not that long ago, there was discussion about trying to have a regional home, or maybe combining two homes. I don't, I, I don't know. I'm not for sure about what the answer is. But I do think the idea that lots of our nursing homes in the next year will be gone, I've heard from several who say, thinking, make it six months, that's the most. At the same time, the state is sitting on a pretty humongous pile of money. And I am only one person there, but I do believe that we take care of foundational issues first. You know, your elderly people and your vulnerable people are part of the fabric of your society. And if you're going to ignore that and ignore what needs to be done to take care of them, it's not going to be long before that is going to creep up, or the whole thing just kind of starts to come down. And I kind of feel like that's where we're at right now. You know, it's, in Jefferson City, it's easy to talk about a big company like Cerner, Cerner's electronic medical records. And you talk about Cerner, and I'm not putting them down. I mean, they employ a lot of people. But they, they get a massive amount of special tax treatment, too. And in my opinion, the more of that you do, the more you place that burden on everyone else. Because costs are not going down for your basic things, and someone has to pay that. I mean, that's just reality. So I think we need to do less of that, and we need to do more building our society from the foundation up. Our foundations are at risk, in my opinion. So that's how I feel about it. I just want to hear what, I want to hear who you are, what your connection is to this issue, and how you feel about it. Start with you.
My name is Joan Rossman, I was in there recruiting last month. And to be honest, I took her through a month of hell trying to settle in. And now we're back here for the one. You know, I figured my taxes last night. We paid over a thousand dollars this year, just me and my husband, that goes to the nursing home. That doesn't include my brother. It doesn't include my other brother. It doesn't include my sister. What about all our tax money that's gone to this? You know, we, that place has been there fifty years. And I've waited through a couple of administrations, and I'm, and now it's time for my mom to be there, and that place isn't here for us anymore. And you say that we can, you know, talk about a regional place. I can't run to a regional place every day. Right now, I'm spending about two hours a day in there trying to get her settled in. And her face lights up when I go in.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
She's not going to know me in a month.
I understand. I think, in response to the question about the taxes, and I'm not running the nursing home now, so I'm just sort of speaking generically, but what I see in government is constant ratcheting up of regulation and requirement. And all of those things cost a lot of money. And I think that the cost to keep a person and to keep the place staff, and especially in the last few years, has just gone skyrocketed. And now, with all of the money flooding, flooding our country, inflation, I mean, things are eight, nine, ten percent higher than they were not long ago. And so when you take the combination of fewer residents, higher costs, less income, you come to a bad spot. And I, I feel like that's where we're at. But I totally understand what you're saying. And I can remember going to see my mother, and it was exactly what you're talking about. Getting her to move to the nursing home was a nightmare. But she was two hundred miles away, and eventually, you know, got that done.
Brittany and I are nurses, and, you know, we're sitting here nodding our heads because, you're preaching to the choir on some of that. We've been through all of that, all of the downsides. I remember taking, taking HRL, they call them, where we took things off and didn't get paid for them when things were, were short and financial prices were Medicaid, with medical reimbursement. You know, we've been through all that. We have seen that come and go. But it, it doesn't matter when it's your family. And it's a shame when I walk down the hallway and I see my old teacher, two old teachers there, and I see, I see the guy that works for us, his grandmother is in there. And, you know, you see people who've probably never been out of the county to live. And their parking lot is not full of visitors. And then it's restful when you have to drive to Bloomfield or Hoka or somewhere.
I totally agree with you. I mean, we all know that the nursing homes, being short-staffed, they depend on the family to come in and help. I mean, they don't say that, but you know that that's true. And I, and during the time that family could not go in, I mean, we had some kind of, not here, but we had some kind of horrific things happen, as I knew they would. Because no one is going in. And people are pushed past their limit. And you have people who can't do anything about it on their own. And that, that is a recipe for disaster. And we, we had some of that.
So the wheels are in motion now. Is it too late to stop them? Is this a moot point? Or is it, I mean?
Well, I, I'm, I thought Tim would be here, but he is not here. But is there someone here that's going to speak on behalf of the nursing home, or can help us, or no, or?
Well, I'm on the chamber of the board.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know, in regards to the taxes, the taxes generate about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Operationally, we take in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per month. And for well over two years, we've spent a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars a month. So the idea, and we sure appreciate the taxes, we wish we had three times the taxes coming in. With those kinds of losses going on, it's really cut into our, our reserves. And when you mentioned six months, I think realistically, we're down to four to five months. And a huge driver of this has been the need to pull in the temp staffs. And what really came to bear this past month wasn't really the financial aspect, even though it weighs heavily on all of us. It was the fact that as of about the tenth, come the twenty-first, we would have no registered nurses other than one that ran our records. And we had ten to eleven shifts that could be covered.
Okay, that's interesting. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Because at one point in time, Dr. Phil, I went and visited you, and I realized that some of us are elderly as hell, so couldn't do your twelve-hour shift. But there were three of us that are registered nurses, still have our license, that would deploy, help, do like that, okay? And I know what the price costs. That's not a nickel or a dollar, you know? I saw a thing, I saw a thing on the, on the registered phone, on Facebook or social media, where you had a, you had a shift that you weren't going to be able to cover because you didn't have an R and slash, you had to close the doors that night. Remember that? Since the twenty-first, I was blocks away, never received a call. Would have grabbed a gun, might not have been able to have done it, have been in the whipper. But I said, we could have charged the door, and you had an R and slash. So my, my issue here is, I hear what you're saying, and I talked with her at length the other day, and I didn't need cutting out R and slash.
No, go ahead.
But the thing is, you know, there are some real questions here that I think they could be answered. I understand, I understand what you're saying as far as staffing. I made a comment about CNAs and some possible solutions to that. And I was told that it wasn't CNAs they needed, it was LPNs. Well, there are some resolutions for that as well, but you're going to have to do something. You can't just say, oh, I've got this problem now, and I'm going to do it. Okay? I ask, and I'm just going to go ahead, if you don't care, I'm going to get this on my chest and shut up and sit still. But the problem that , that was, that's financial, to the tune of two point two million dollars. Okay? That included a heating system. It included a roof, right, in my lawn? I mean, that's some of the big chunks of money that you're talking about. I talked with the city clerk, and they came aware that there's infrastructure, and not any wasted that much. But they haven't decided what to do with that yet. And talking over three hundred thousand dollars. Now, you're talking taxes. I mean, how serious are we about trying to bail this out? And I'm real concerned that we get this dropped, and here we are. I don't believe we got there. I don't believe we got there in a couple of months. So I think we've got the problem. We know that it's finance, we know that it's debt. So I asked what the plan was. Let's vote it. You had no idea what the people in this community would set up right now. I'm talking money-wise, warm-body-wise, that would help to preserve this. And people don't care anymore about my history, but I'm going to tell you. She said it was fifty years old, and she's right. I remember when we didn't have a hospital, when Dr. Phil, where I had that health extension. And I remember when we didn't have a nursing home. And I probably had twelve, twelve members that had gone through the nursing home. And you know how hard those people struggle to go through Hill Burton and some of the other things, to get this established. I don't think this community, if they were made known to what the situation is, would stand by and help us out. I just don't think they would do it. And I don't say that like that. I have a husband that was a CNA. I could just have to work out there on the floor. I mean, you know what I'm saying? And I don't care anymore. I look around and I talk to some of the other nurses. And back to what I said, at the time when the hospital was having issues with nursing, I had three that put in that patient. I know it's because we're old. Nobody said that. But we don't look like we're very viable. I've got to tell you, I've worked staffing up. If you've got a good charge already, she can work with some A's, not C's. She can work with a couple of LPNs, and she can handle a lot of people. It's been done for years. May not be the glitz and glory that everybody thinks, but they will be clean, and they will be turned, and they will be fed. And maybe for a while, that's all we can ask. But I don't want to know what the plan is to come out of this. I haven't heard anybody say anything. I will tell you that, and I have not had the, the opportunity to visit with Mr. Eblin here. Like I said, I did, I did, with the city. Ultimately, became aware of what they're setting on. I don't know what our county has as far as infrastructure. And yes, I understand there's roads and stuff that have to be taken. But is this a crisis that we're going to just throw out, throw the bathwater out, then go keep the baby? I mean, what, what are we doing here? We've got people moving, moving residents now, you know? And this is the first that most of the communities heard about this. We've got that opportunity to step up. And I don't know how much, I don't know how much money that you may be setting on, on infrastructure, or where you plan to put it. Maybe that's all settled and done. And if not, people from the nursing home board need to be standing up and saying, can we have a piece of that? You know? There are block grants, and that's what they're for. If you look at it, I am, I'm nobody, you know? I'm nobody. I just, but I just frankly need a really hard plan of the steps that we're going to take to stop this. And when you talk about we're losing utilization of the nursing home, well, I'm not sure that firing people out to other communities is going to solve that problem. I mean, if we already are down on that census, so you turn around and shift more out, how does that increase your census? One of the things I haven't seen for years has been a very, very active campaign about why people should break their lockless to stop the pandemic. And there's some good reasons. When you have local people taking care of local people, they're, they're going to care because they're going to run into that, that lady on the street, and she's going to say, you sure did a horrible job taking care of my mother, you know? Or, my goodness, you know, mom thought it was great. Again, I can't do anything except personal, that my mom was a teller for over forty years at the bank down here. Sat on the corner at the nursing home, had Alzheimer's. And people would come by and they'd say, oh, hey, Monique, how are you doing? And she'd light up like a Christmas tree, you know? And she'd say, oh, how's your family, blah, 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 blah. And then she'd turn to me and she'd say, who was that? Didn't matter. She had flash of being working with somebody. Those kind of things you lose. And I was around in the eighties when they started doing the regional hospital, working with nursing reserve, and at that time, they were able to, to study that. But like I said, I remember, I remember when you went to Quincy, you know, you went to Cooks, or Navy, you went to a tomb. And if you were having your heart attack in Lock County, you've got ten minutes before the platinum ten. You've got an hour, your golden hour, before you're in a big situation with a piece of cardiac. If you have a helicopter, but you've called out, and you're sitting on the pad out there, waiting on, or the airboard, that's now, but you're sitting there waiting on this helicopter to come get you. If it's not sitting on their pad hot and ready, and lift off, it's fifteen minutes. And then you're looking, twenty minutes, I'm being generous there. You're so gone on your platinum ten and your golden hour, that they might as well stay where they're at, and wait for the normal doc. Now, if that's what they're after, let's just say so, you know? And if we're looking at the corporates to come in and take care of it, like we kind of end up doing with our hospital, with blessings of the nation, then say that. Let people know what we're talking about. You know, this is just an observation. I remember when, it wasn't that long ago that I thought, do we need a little hospital every so many miles, you know? There's not that many people in there. But then my mother went there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they took great care of her. And if they hadn't been there, you know, we would have really had a disaster. And that was a great big eye-opener for me. So what you're saying is absolutely true.
Just a side track on that. I worked in a small hospital about the size of this one up in Iowa. And we had a mayor that thought that our hospital was a Band-Aid station. And I don't care, he called me, and told his wife, he became very seriously ill with cardiac issues. She was COVID, resuscitated, flown to Des Moines. But she would have died if the Band-Aid station hadn't been there. And he realized that later, and came back and apologized to his staff. But, you know, until you don't have it, you know, and I don't know if we'd lose it if we ever did that.
Yeah.
And that's my concern. So any, I mean, I'm not worth much anymore, but I would be willing to do whatever I can to be able to see that this doesn't occur.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I can be sure from my point of view, and from most of my board who was here today, that we don't want this institution closed.
So we see?
We, we did vote to close it. We don't want to close. We would sure entertain having staff show up, so we wouldn't have to have it closed.
Okay.
The funding, I would like to think that the state and the federal government is going to do something about Medicaid reimbursement.
Well, you know, when I spoke to the governor's office, they go, you know, we're going to rebase our rates for the nursing homes. And I said, well, you know, that, that won't happen until July. I mean, that goes through the whole process. And it's been at the deficit for such a long time. And now the cost has increased so much that no matter where you put it, you know, I feel like it's still going to be short. But I do, you know, I'm an eternal optimist, and I'm always surprised somewhat, but have a lot of gratitude for all of our communities. If we didn't decide, we just decide. We can't let this happen. And if you decide that, and you're willing to move toward what you need to do, I mean, sometimes you can pull it off. And I believe that's how we made it all this time, by having that attitude. Because really, nobody comes in, no one's coming in to save us. But, so I guess I'm going to ask if the nursing home, if you have the money to make it another four or five months, then we need to address the staffing thing, and we need to see exactly what, what do we need to come up with?
The staffing to meet regulatory requirements is huge.
And so I need to know specifically what, what we're short on.
And when we contact, what was it, seven to eight temp agencies, and they weren't even guaranteed but for one shift to get us coverage, that's, that's alarming. Those are the people that we're going to pay a premium to.
Hundred dollars an hour, too.
And they're, and they're not. And they're, and they're not, they're much different.
They wouldn't have nights. They would not, they would only work days.
I wonder what people leaving too. You know, it takes a while to turn your reputation around and draw new staff in. Because there, there were some issues before. And so, you know, it, it, it just seemed like such a quick decision to make. And it takes time to build that reputation back. So the nurses like us wanna go into a place like that.
You're both available now, right?
I can't say about her, but I can.
No, I'm not joking.
No, I'm not either.
And I, and I know a, a nurse that is not in Florida, who's one that had made application. And, um, right now, she's licensed. She's taught I L C N A class. That's another thing. What about some type of affiliation with a school? For them to come out with a, a side pen. I, CEO is all I can think of.
We used to do that all the time.
Absolutely. You bring them in, they get credit for it. They come out with a certification.
They work some nights.
And, and they work, I mean, you know, they, they work it. And everybody's gonna say, oh, COVID, it's not going to be because of COVID. Let me tell you. I, and, and I, I feel like I'm singing a lost song, but as a nurse of forty years, I'm sure that ten has two. You know, I've worked with VRE, MRE, active TB, hepatitis, HIV. I mean, those are all very, very contagious things. So you teach these new people the quality of, of, of working and learning. You know, I know they've got the vaccine out and I have a family member, probably shooting for saying this, but wash your hands, social distance. And if you think that you are at risk, then wear a mask. I'm not gonna not wear a mask and offend you. But I know that they typically have to work to protect the sterile area. What do you wear a mask for? NOB or what do you wear a mask for in surgery? Okay? It's to protect that sterile field. It's not to protect you. And, and I understand that. I don't have a problem with it. I'll do that, I don't have a pocket if you want me to. Um, but I would much rather wash my hands if I touched anything much. Social distance to some degree. Um, but those things are, are old things that we need to hone into these new people because then we can work those dangers next. So I think that could be a resource for staffing. And we used to say, we grow our own in the small community. We used to have a shadow department, that's been years ago. And that was so that those thought maybe they wanted to be a physical therapist or thought maybe they wanted to be a doctor or thought maybe they wanted to be a nurse. You gotta look at what it was really. And hopefully it was positive enough that they went ahead with the school. But you've got two upcoming programs that I know had trouble finding clinical areas, clinical sites, where they could do their clinicals. Well, gee, you know, if you've got somebody that's really providing an oversight to these students, you don't have any better care. I'd rather have a student nurse any day of my life because I knew she had an experienced professional looking over their children. I say she, there's some excellent men, you know, that are, are needed as well. And I'm kind of random here, but I just think, I think that, that the thing with staffing, I may be wrong, but we can sit here and whine about not having it, but we can get active and do something.
And I'm wondering, I mean, you're connected, they, they're connected to the hospital.
Absolutely.
So I'm assuming you have an RN there twenty-four hours a day?
More than that.
So I don't know, you know, that is something maybe since you're darn near to the same building, that I could get them to put aside some of their rules.
Well, we, I, I think all of the things you talked about, at least in our experience, have been in place. Growing your own. We were made a preceptor facility for clinical preceptorships, which is rare. Um, typically people will sign up and then they're, you're on gun in terms of salary and our signing bonuses and our manual incentive by larger metropolitan areas. The onboarding of a nurse, even if someone with as much skill and talent and experience and generosity as you've expressed and you and others, onboarding a nurse in this circumstance with an electronic medical rep, it's a real tiger, real tiger handle. Um, the CMS regulations, the not state regulations, the CMS regulations handcuff us a lot in terms of just being able to get very willing, able and ready people to get in there and do the job. And we often, how many young people are there that are watching our show? Let's just say the demographics of the workforce and workforce behavior has changed from when you and I were trained and maybe you and I are hardwired to do, Brenda. People call in right before a shift. With PTO, they don't have to get a reason. You know, there's a national workforce shortage and it's compounded in rural and it's magnified here. The demographics of our areas change. And it's just the practical aspects of on a dime, providing quality, safe and compliant care. I'm speaking for the hospital here, but I'll speculate that it's no different than it is at your place. Or, or nigh impossible. We regularly have to go in first. Now, that doesn't mean that we transfer people out. We hold them in the emergency room till we can try to, your son works very well with the nursing staff to try to figure out how can we do that? But sadly, we don't have staff that can on a dime come in and manage what we have to produce. Should the surveyors come in? And people can hotline a hospital? They have hotline nursing facilities? I know nothing. I, I don't know whether they're out at your place or not. We live in the fear of the mighty almighty surveyor and we have to be compliant. It's not an optional. It's not a, well, we're trying. We have no choice.
Now, all I'm gonna say is I've been through a lot of state surveys and a lot of different institutions. I understand what you're saying. I would have to see the regs of staffing. But those aren't, I mean, they won't be different. The computer thing, why don't you get around that? If you take me in there and you've got this big computer program and, and believe me, I've seen it in operations, so I agree. Um, you know, but it is a nightmare, I know that. So let's take the story going. And hire a scribe. One of you thousands in office. What?
I've tried to hire scribes. That's a skill set. You don't pull that out of thin air. You just don't pull those things out of thin air. In a modern environment, the quality of safety is expected of us.
People that are already in the facility, that are comfortable with this computer thing that you've got. Um, what I'm saying is, so, so I go in and I make rounds and I make a note on all of the patients. And you have scribes, it's not walking with me, but she takes my notes and puts them in my calendar.
But with the greatest of respect, that's not putting in orders. It's not scanning the patient. It's not doing all of the necessary tasks. And, and look, we've got ads out now. I invite you to reply. I'll fast track it. I can do that. I kid you not.
Well, okay, because I probably have another nurse on the board and she's not getting a job today. That, that.
Please do. I mean, we can see the ads that are posted. And it may be because we're, we're, we're basically staying above the water barely. Not financially, look at our financials. The last five years, we've lost money. Two years in a row that the Congress have said they have concerns about us being a going concern. The care center is a canary in a coal mine.
Okay.
And I'm just telling you, it's, 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 and workers these days are all running on fumes. So I would be grateful. I would, I would, I would genuflect eternally if you'd have. And anyone else who would. Please don't fight us, fight them. They need a desperate.
Well, I, I don't think that, are we using our roof or are we using that?
Can you onboard her in two days?
Two days.
That's not hard. Brenda, can I say this? I, I've been on the board for one year, one year. And when I came on, there were staffing concerns then. Our biggest goal due to finances was to find people and try to get away from the agency nurses. Okay? So it changed. In about six months, our director of nursing and our administration changed.
In the last five years, it's changed. They've both changed three times.
Yes. And so we, we interviewed, we, we found a director of nurses. We, we had, we were getting away from the agency nursing. So we saw this awesome light at the end of the tunnel. But we have had on in need on other websites in our local paper, which in the last two weeks, I believe we had a please, please, please.
An urgent.
An urgent call that we were in desperation. We needed people to apply.
And got no calls.
Right. Got no calls for it. And we, I know that Tim contacted, um, the emergency management. He contacted.
Cause our director of nurses put in, no, it's.
Because she saw what was coming down. We had nurses that were there, twelve, they were doing their shifts and then trying to fill in for other shifts because we have to have a licensed professional in the building at all times. But when you can't find them, well, we had a lot of people apply in the last, and I don't know the answer to why. Part of it was because we were still short on staff. And those people could see that they were, they were gonna have to sacrifice themselves.
And it's not until weekends. You can apply to Methodist Medical where you can wear a COVID virus at home. You know, like when you have smaller communities. Everybody wears local hats.
Right. These are the things we're seeing. And you know what? I, I think it's wonderful, the people that would be willing to step in, but that would have to be on a continuous basis to fill those. When you don't have enough to fill your shifts for December, let alone January.
Okay. My question to you, Cindy, and I ask, when I talk with Tim, I ask him first of all, how much money you need? Okay? What about staffing? Well, I don't staff, what staff, how much staff are you short? What do you, you could tell me about the regs and I understand about the RN. But how much staff do you need for shit? Are you doing twelves? Are you doing eights? Oh, excellent. Okay. But what if you, what if you switch that out? You can't work in twelves until, then that, then that.
I've asked that question of my DON, who's one of my five vacancies. DON, OB supervisor, pharmacist, uh, what else? Four, two, oh, daycare manager. And now we don't have a food service.
I think we need to give that.
My point is, there's a reason that you don't get, people don't, they wanna work twelves so they can be offered for you.
Sure.
Now, those people who entered with that expectation are working four shifts, five shifts in a row, twelve-hour shifts.
That's what I'm saying. But you're not hearing that.
I'm hearing you loud and clear. I don't think you're living the experience with all due respect.
I think we've been there, we use staff, so with all due respect.
Not, not in this year, Brenda. Not in this year.
How about me?
It's different.
So I'm wondering, taking into consideration the things that we do need, could we, could we try to have a goal of saying, we're gonna keep these open for the next year and we're going to try to recruit people in and we're gonna do what we can do as a community together to try to fill these gaps? I mean, if we could, if we could say that and if we could identify what's the top four things you need and then we communicate that to everyone, this, these are the top four things that we need. And we will need some community, um, investment. But I do think I can go back to the governor's staff and say, listen, they're willing to put in this and this is their plan. And let's try to see if we can't turn this around because this is only the first problem we're going to have. You're going to have a hundred more like it. Yes.
This is, with, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. What I'm saying to Bill is, we need to know how many nurses you need to cover your costs.
I, I don't.
I know you don't, I know you don't. I'm just saying. I mean, in order to address it, that's what we need to know.
Right.
When I talked with Tim, he said, what'd they say, two point two million dollars? Okay, but that might get you over the bump. We've got to be looking at some, generating something more. You know, I don't know. I need to see, I need to talk to the nursing home about that, but I need to see what the regs are as far as if you, if you downsize your beds for lung care. Can you, I don't think you can release because you are a, I don't know what you can do. Um, just I'm not sure the other day we were still a county nursing home.
It's a district, right? That's the challenge.
Yes.
We have an aunt out there, she's a charter vendor. A lot of her family would have been happy to help.
Absolutely.
About, and the rules have been so restrictive recently in theaters. Maybe it's actually.
And so, and that's the kind of thing, and, and the governor's office did say this to me. He said, we need to know what you want. Or what, what do you need? Saying the very same thing you're saying, and that's why I'm here. And he also said.
I'm the fence for the hell.
Yeah. Less government is what we need. But.
I, I have to go. I'm sorry, but I just wanted to word out what I have to say.
Okay. So he said, maybe we can waive some of the rules. So, you know, whenever I hear that, my ears really perk up because the rules are what kill you. I mean, it just gets beyond common sense a lot of times and it drives you out of.
Is there anybody here from DHSS? Bill, can you guys address that? I mean, you got, did you guys apply for a waiver? Or do I understand that?
We put in for a director.
Could that be something that you need that?
Yes, I'm thinking about that because here we are connected to the hospital.
But why, it was denied, right?
They don't have a director of nurses.
Well, we, we won't as of February fourteenth, eleventh, fourteen.
Well, that's, that's.
Well, we will. We'll work, we'll find someone.
Yesterday.
Brenda, will you apply, please?
Listen.
I'm kidding, I'm not kidding yet. We're definitely, I mean, it's.
And I'm not kidding you either. I mean, I need to know what the, what the, because when I worked at Woodfield, I'm asking, saying, hey, all right. Because their, their nursing home is a floor of their, or part of their hospital. And when I worked there as a night supervisor, we were expected to round on the care center portion of it. I mean, it's kind of what you're talking about. I don't really have to fly.
Now, see, I'm not unaware that the governor has the authority and maybe they do.
Oh, he does.
Does he have the authority to, to waive non-compliance that would result in non-payment and non-participation, non-participation of CMS? I don't know if he.
That's a little stickier.
I don't know if he can waive those.
It's a little stickier, I'll grant you.
That's what I mean.
But.
When you call DHSS and you say to them, we need a waiver for our DON because we're not able to have one. And what exactly, you know, could we do? And well, you can close. We, we don't really suggest that. But if you don't have someone in the building, we will fine you.
See there?
What can we do? How can we get someone?
Right there, right there.
Is there anything, is there anything we can do? Is there anyone we, can you help us out? Can you help us find someone? We've, we've utilized every option out there to find someone.
I think we do.
Where do you? Well, you have the question.
I just wanna speak as a former employee at the nursing home.
Right there is where I can help you. That is something that I can do.
Right.
Um, I, I, is that thing going?
Yes.
Well.
And there's thirty people watching.
There's thirty people on there. Well, all right. Still, a fact is a fact. I feel that when you call to find out about getting some help, A, half the time you're lucky if you can get someone on the line. Or B, you get transferred so many times, some people just give up.
Oh, wow.
But that is something that I can help you with and I will help you with. And I think it's crazy that we have one that's forty feet away that we can't say, listen, we're connected. So that, that's gonna be my first.
Well, but even if so, we have our obligations to take care of patients and we have a defined nurse-patient ratio.
Yes.
And, and, and for many reasons, aside from compliance, quality and safety being primordial. Based on the high acuity we're seeing now with the, with the rolling convulsions of COVID surgeries, we, we, we have, I have tried to offer help to Tim and I've been told repeatedly it would not, we don't have the horses to help because they're busy with our patients. And if you now distract them with the obligation and the accountability, not to mention our malpractice insurer, and it goes on and on and on. And it, it is nigh impossible to do what we're doing, much less as much as we would like.
But what I'm saying is, we find a way.
I agree.
So I go to the state and I say, listen, we have two facilities here that work together. Sure, they're stretched thin, but we need you to find us out of these agencies that you have, someone to come in, we can make sure that you're adequate in staff, but that we're kind of sharing.
We'd be happy to do that, but we're not gonna sacrifice quality and safety.
I get it. And I'm not acting.
No matter what the waiver is, we can't do that. You can't pull people out of the air when someone calls in at six fifty-nine for a seven o'clock shift. We have tried. I've gone down the list. And this happens repeatedly, which means you need to have a BESH. And I don't think you live here all year round, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, I thought you went to Florida. Okay, well, good. Thank God for that. Oh, I thought you went to Florida, okay, good, thank God for that, I'm glad to see you.
You're not going on any more vacation, so.
Hey, if you'd like to become an F T E, if anyone in the community would love, we've been advertising for ages and I'm sure you have. Where are the bodies, why does it take a crisis?
Yeah, where are the bodies? I tried to look through years of posts for, I tried, I'm a former employee.
Of the.
Of the nursing home.
Okay.
I worked there as an N A, I worked there as a C N A, I worked there as a C N T, an L P N, and an R N. My goal in life was to be the D O N of the nursing home. I loved that place. My father is the dietary manager, I worked there, ten of my family worked there, three generations under one Ruth worked there. I quit for personal reasons, took a pay cut and went to the health department. I also have somebody else that worked there thirty-four years in the same boat as me, took a pay cut as well. Because for one, it's staffing, I've worked on the floor as a C N A while being an R N. I've worked eighteen hours, I've worked six days a week. I came in, I went to clinicals, got home at four, came in and worked six P to six A. It's a thankless job, and I know it is, and I think that's a lot of the problem. But years, it's been years that they can't find help. We've come in, you can't replace people on a dime. Or when they just no call, no show, and then they don't answer your calls because you're saying, hey, Sally, where are you at? You know, I need you in here to help take care of these people. And then you ask the night shift to stay over and help and it just escalates and escalates. But, and this is no offense to the board, I don't feel like anybody has asked the hard questions of us long haulers. Why did you quit?
Why did you?
I quit because I was being over, passed over a million times to go back on day shift. They hired and hired and hired day shift people when I said, please put me back on day shift. My husband works on the road, my husband is gone five days a week. My mother has cancer, I can't drop my kids off with her. And now I'm working nights and I love nights and I loved everything about nights, but I couldn't. Plus, I'm getting, I don't know about this tuition reimbursement, but I'm gonna say this because it's been an upsetting point for me for many years. I was never asked about tuition reimbursement. I had an administrator ask multiple C N As in front of me. Do you want this to go back to do your L P N, do you want this? And I was working, I did finish my R N for that place. But things aren't gonna change because there's no staff, there's no kitchen staff, there's no, um, there's no staff, there's no C N As, there's nothing. It's just, I don't know, I.
I think no matter where, no matter where you work, I mean, we have companies, so. And I've always, I was manager for Oats, you know, back in the eighties, so, um, no matter where you are, there's always going to be situations that people feel that they're not heard. And, um, it can always be better. And I think that, um, it's on both parties to try to make that happen. And sometimes when you're swamped, you're exhausted, they're exhausted, everybody's exhausted. And you just get to the point where, and I, and I, I don't know what happened in your instance, but, just from hearing you, I'm thinking, okay, you're working nights. And we have a fire, the building is burning down, so to speak. And we're trying to find somebody and we've got you on nights and you're doing it. So it's probably easier to find somebody to work days and so we can just get somebody in here for the days, maybe we can adjust it later on. And then in the meantime, you're feeling like, nobody's even listening to me, nothing's changing, it's not working, nobody cares, you know, about me. And then everybody's at odds, and I think that's what we have here.
That's, it's a lot of the reason why the long-haul employees stepped away is because it was a lot of, I'm at odds with this. And I think that's why the applications aren't coming in, is because nothing was changing.
Okay.
I agree.
Oh, excuse me, I have, I have a stroke, so I don't talk too good. But, where are you top dot doing now? Can you do with it without, within one month? Cause I had a notice to leave for my mom out there in one month.
So, yes, I mean, I, I think that's what we're here to decide. Can we try to come together and say, can we come up with a list of what we need to do, can we make sure that everybody in the community knows we need this? Can I go back to the state and try to get a waiver for some of the things that might be helpful? Can we do all of those things? Are we all committed to it? And then it's going to take, you know, periodic meetings of saying, are we getting there? And with everyone knowing, if we don't get there, we're not gonna have a place.
Right, because.
And you need to know, I, I understand that.
The regs are going.
Yeah, yes.
Why didn't we just hear about this last Wednesday? Why wasn't this done earlier to outreach to the community to tell them, we might have to close our doors, this is serious, we need the community input. We need to, uh, get the word out that if we don't get employees, we're gonna close, or the families of the residents, can you help us? Like, call, call the governor's office, call your office. I just felt like it was all snuck in and it makes me mad.
I agree with you. I.
And just like this meeting today, Kim and I didn't even have it on there, I called General Store to tell them. And then the meeting Friday, they shut us down for thirty minutes. And we haven't had a chance to talk about this. So we are now, and this is what should have been happening two months ago, before they said, you guys gotta move out of the residential facility, you gotta move out of the care center. I think if your parents are in there, what would you do?
Yeah.
And, and weren't you gonna go in there someday maybe? We live here, we're in this community. Um, if, if we lose them, and then they'll trip us to the hospital.
I think the people working there feel like, we're advertising, 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 advertising. And, you know, you don't almost have to live in a cage to not know how, how hard the environment is. I, I get your point, I understand that. But when you're, like I say, when your building's burning down and you're trying to do everything you can do and you're trying to keep it from getting, getting burnt to the ground, sometimes you feel you're living in a world where you're thinking about it twenty-four hours a day. And you just feel like everyone knows. And every, and I, I, I understand.
But this networking going on right now is wonderful, it should have been started earlier.
Yeah.
Let it compete.
Well, we're starting today.
Yes.
Um, my name's Liana McRobert, I am a member of the care center board, I also, my mother's also a resident at the care center. Um, I've been on the board, I can't really say how many years, probably seven, five to seven. Um, I, with my, as a family myself, we waited to have our mother admitted just because of COVID. I have six brothers and sisters, we all wanna see her, we're a big family, we're very close. And so we're no different than anybody else, we waited until it was absolutely necessary. Uh, the thing that troubles me here in this meeting is, it feels combative. It feels like that as the board or the care center that we didn't do every single thing possible to not have this happen, so I just want to speak to the fact that there were a lot of things that were done by our administrator, by our director of nurses. We had weekly meetings, we have personally called nurses, retired or people that have recently graduated from L P N to R N, people that work at the hospital, like, would you take a shift? Um, would you do this? I mean, it's like, and if you didn't get the call, it wasn't because you, we didn't think you were worthy, it's like we've, literally, we're human beings and we didn't think of, we can't think of everybody. But what happened, the, the thing that I do want to address is that what brought the immediate decision. We all knew that there was a financial situation. We are getting under-reimbursed for, for our residents. There are thirty-seven residents, there are seven in the R C F, the rules are different for the R C F. They are required a thirty-day dismissal, the others are sixty days. If we can staff by a nurse, a December, January, and February calendar. What led to this is we could not do that. We could not do that, we met and we were having weekly meetings, we could not fill a December schedule. As of December twenty-first, that, we could not fill the twenty-first, the twenty-second, I think Christmas Day, the twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth, those were the five we could not fill.
We had twelve shifts, twelve shifts and we had no licensed nurse. And so the, the, I'm administrator. So the emphasis of our actors, my actors, the board's actors, were trying to get nurses in to be on duty. Because if you do not have a nurse in your building twenty-four-seven, you can't have a residence. All the other issues take a backseat, because that issue of getting coverage.
But like she was saying, if the word had went out to the community, there might have been people that would came and worked.
But somebody else.
But I don't feel like they would have, because the, not that the word was out, that it was closing, but dietary, housekeeping, um, nursing, C N A, all of these shifts. You can look Facebook, you can look four-on-one, the newspaper, I haven't seen a time. I actually started to look and screenshot to show people how many times the nursing home had been looking for help. And you just lose track because it's enormous. I, as long as I've been there, I don't remember a moment where they haven't needed help and applied, you know? I don't know, it was hard when my Aunt Linda retired from medical records. It was hard to fill, they filled that multiple times because it's just hard. And I understand now everybody wants to pull together, but where was it when we were begging? Where was it when I was R N in-house for eighteen hours or for X amount of days a week? Or I worked six P to six A and then turned around and stayed extra because there was no R N in-house?
We do, we have great people and they want, I mean, they're committed people, because it's hard work. And we're doing them in. I mean, they got us through, you know, healthcare in general and with COVID. And, you know, the residents requiring more care because there is depression, they aren't seeing their family members. They're not getting out for visits, they're, it's all harder and they're, they're committed. But, but I don't know what the answer is, and I'd be welcome to entertain anything.
And it's obviously not money, because if thirty bucks an hour, I mean, that's for an R N, that's like, holy moly, you know? Twenty-five dollars an hour for an L P N, Tim reached out to me at the health department and I said, well, you know, I'll ask my employees. But, you know, of course, we're, we all work and if I could work a P R M shift, I definitely would. You know, but everybody's kind of, it's a strain, you know?
Why, why did you, we had worked with that back then when you were on versus now, where it's a difference? The nurses was no different then than now, right?
You're, you're absolutely correct, Steve, and.
Now, what's the difference now, the A G, veterans?
To me, COVID. I think COVID is back toward everything.
I, I stayed P R M through COVID, even working at the health department, because I was still very torn on, do I, do I really wanna give this place up or not? Because like I've said, it's been a family thing.
Well, see, there the answer is no.
Yeah.
But to be honest, we had, we were probably gonna lose, what, forty percent of our tax staff if the mask mandate went into effect December third. Or the vaccine mandate. And so, like, we would have closed immediately had the, the government not brought that back. And that's not dead, it's just not in effect at the moment, but we would have immediately closed if that would have went into effect. Cause we can't fill shifts.
Because some of the nurses looked at it and said, oh, this is coming, this is coming, and so that's for the short, the staff altogether. And I don't wanna sacrifice all of my day and night, every night, every day, to be here.
I, I hear you.
It's an complicated issue and, you know, like, I feel like we all want an easy answer. And I would love to be on board with that, but I don't know what that is.
I don't think anybody thinks there's an easy answer.
We can, I think we have to really be careful about being realistic, about taking what is a congested heart failure patient, giving them, putting them on a treadmill. That's what we've done with COVID. And, and in a setting where we now have a problem with utilization of facilities because of our demographics in our community. Declining census is a real problem. And so while we may be able to buy a little time with stopgap measures, we really need to look at some long-term solutions too. Because when it comes to staffing, born out of COVID and other long-term concerns, you can keep throwing money at more and more expensive staff, trying to compete with agencies. Um, but that just accelerates the downward spiral in terms of our financial situation. You talk about the tax base, at the hospital, we make, the tax revenue is roughly around three hundred fifty a year on a twenty-three million dollar budget. That's less than a one and a half percent. So while it's very appreciated, it makes a difference, it's not gonna make up a million dollar a year loss. Even if we double the tax rate, and I doubt that that would be successful in this community, based on previous experience, school board.
Yeah, and I'm gonna say.
So I mean, you know, we, we gotta be careful about thinking that a short-term infusion is gonna be a long-term answer.
Well, we have two separate issues here though, we have the hospital issue and we have the nursing home issue. And while they are, have so similarities, they are two separate entities.
Absolutely.
And so, and I agree with you that, um, it's going to be difficult if, if there can be an answer even found. And anything that we come up with is short-term and we really need to take a hard look at what can we do to make, to make this sustainable. And that's gonna be different for you than it is, I think, for the nursing home, because you're, you're that much more complicated.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not, but I think there's a lot of parallels.
There is.
And then you talk about money that the state's sitting on and like our counties and our cities that have received state and local fiscal recovery funds. It's all population-based, so lower populated areas like Scotland County where Memphis, I mean, I think we got one point, maybe four million total for our area. But as a state, we're a couple billion or something, but then you look at like counties like Adair County where the city gets four million, well, the county gets to use that population too, so they get five million, so we're hitting even harder here and it's separating the gap between rural and urban areas. I don't know any way the state can look at the money that the state got, because obviously populated areas are not getting near as much money to use some of that money to rural hospitals, rural healthcare to kind of be a stopgap in this.
Are you thinking about accounting for the differences in the, in the basic tax base?
The way I look at it.
Because it's not just population, they have a different tax base in Kirkville, right?
Well, thank, well, those, those numbers, dollars are based on population. The way I look at it is if the state could come up with a way in this time, as like a critical access hospital, like a critical access nursing home, to like fund the difference in the Medicaid area through those funds to keep these places afloat. Because eventually you're still gonna have to come up with a sustainable model to move forward. Like, we can throw all the money that Memphis and Scotland County got at the nursing home and that might get us through a year. And then we're back in the same spot.
Well, I think we agreed, we, we agreed on that. Anything that we happen to come up with, and I, I agree entirely with what you're saying, and we talked about that at the beginning. I mean, everything goes with population, so if there's a lot of people, then they're, you know, they send everything there. And so, we never win that race, we never win that. And, but the argument could be made that it's, it's not fair and it's not responsible to the rest of your state, I think that argument could be made.
So what if we had a, what if we had a, 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 a community skilled bench of people that put their name in the hat to be willing to be R Ns, et cetera? And if the nursing home put out a, here's the requirements that we can't get passed, you gotta have, you gotta have a certification for A C L, whatever it is. You know, you have to have V L H, you have to have this and that. Put that out there on social media and others and see if you have interest and get training. And just see, really, when you put the pedal to the metal and you really put the task out, how many people are willing to make a commitment to do twenty? how many people are willing to make a commitment to do twenty shifts a year, fifty shifts a year? You know, I think you have to, you have to at some point define what would it be that you need? And put it out there and see how many people would make a real commitment, like a pledge to your church, you know? Yeah, I'll be there and I'll do the training.
Yes, my, my reaction to that is very easy for people to react and say, I would be willing to do that. Or about the following, for example. I'm telling you that I spent hours and hours trying to find licensed nurses. I looked through different avenues. Um, I, I contacted and worked through the SEMA, the state office. They sent notices with our urgent message with the dates that were available to seventy-seven licensed nurses. Now, I don't know what their pool is. I don't know if that's a SEMA pool or if that is from the Board of Nursing. But there were seventy-seven licensed nurses in Knox, Willwood, Scotland, Putnam, and the Dare Counties. When, when that went out, I thought, well, good, we're going to find somebody. One call. When they found out that we had nine shifts to cover, they, they, they couldn't do that. Okay? So, I mean, the list was extensive. I went over with the board what I had done to try and get licensed nurses. Okay? Um, so, uh, I'm not encouraged that that kind of a reaction would last very long. I had, uh, through, I had asked the, the paper, can you squeeze an article in? I have got to get this message out. Urgent and immediate. Is there anybody that gets the Democrat? Did you see the article? With the ad, it wasn't hard to find. What it said, big black bold letters, urgent and immediate. I'm talking loud so everybody can hear me, I'm not angry, but I'm just trying to emphasize the response that we get and the, the confidence that any reaction would be lasting and the confidence that we would be able to fill those shifts on an ongoing basis. I had someone call who, who was a licensed nurse and I would work for you for almost nothing, a little rental wage. That's, that's generous, that's grateful, that's appreciated. But is that lasting? Is that a long-term solution? The, one of the things that I've mentioned to Senator Loughlin is this issue. And I'm not, I'm not being negative about nurses, I'm not begrudging their opportunities, but they have boundless opportunities to go wherever they want and do whatever they want and make crazy money doing it. The, the agency staffing, uh, and this is nursing home, hospitals, budget and dollars are a lot different. But what, what once was a twenty-five dollar an hour position, we have to pay seventy-five dollars an hour. And even at that twenty-five dollar an hour, we did not have the reimbursement to make it work financially. That's been lacking, they're working on that. I, I talked with, uh, a gentleman yesterday evening, had some insight as to what's on the table with no health net on this rebasing. And kind of, they, they've been doing more work than I thought they had actually to have a plan that's far from being approved, but it is to, uh, rebase and increase. And then what they're asking for is that every two years that it would be rebased again so that that reimbursement keeps up with expenses. But it hasn't done that for many years. The last time there was a rebase was about two thousand and, two thousand and four, something like that. And they used to look at the cost of the facility incurred and adjust their Medicaid rate to that facility. Uh, after two thousand and four, they had a system of just a flat amount increase every facility, no matter what, it was just an easier way of doing that. But, uh, so my point was, uh, financially, it was an uphill climb and a struggle at twenty-five dollars an hour. But when you have to fill those spots, pay seventy-five dollars an hour, you don't have a chance in hell. I'm sorry, but that's just, that's just saying it the way it is.
And even if staffing wasn't an issue, it's my understanding, like to break even, you'd need forty-three census in the care center and twelve in the RCF. And we have thirty-seven in seven.
Has there been an outreach to the, in our community?
Yes, multiple times.
There are some of them coming to the meeting tonight?
They, it is my understanding, they want their own rules. I mean, they want their own nursing, they don't want, they want their own meals, they want community meals. And as far as regulation, regulatory, we cannot comply with what they require. And it, this has been for years, we've worked it out.
Yeah, I mean, because I keep hearing these rules and these regulations. And I guess I would really like to see a copy of them. I'm not the brightest forty watt light bulb in Scotland County, but I can probably read them and understand them. And rules and regulations are nothing new. I mean, you keep saying, with all due respect, Dr. Phil, this is a different year, a different time. We've always fought regulations. They, I mean, they've always come up with new things. Medicare has always, Medicaid has always been, you know, trying to figure out what they will pay the best dollar for and trying to go there. I, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying and I know it's a different day and COVID's put another wrinkle in it, but the way I see it, there's two things. And we've agreed that I would like to see us do something to try to stop this train from going down the track.
I concur.
And with that, I need to know, if you want me to work on it, I need to know, you've told me, how many thousand dollars you need or million dollars you need. But I need to know, how many shifts did you say you needed to cover through December?
At that time, we had about twelve shifts.
Okay, I need to know, how many nurses do you need? Are they RNs, are they LPNs, are they CNAs? And let me, give me your list that you called and let me use some call. You know, I'm not saying I can fix it, but at least it's an opportunity to try and fix that burden off of you so that you business people can be looking at your grants, so that you can be looking at, if, if there's nothing to keep us from downsizing the nursing home, which the hospital did this once upon a time, um, to a number that is feasible, what did you say it took to break even?
Forty-three and twelve.
Forty-three and twelve.
Wait, wait a second, it takes more than that. The, the budget that I had put together had no overtime in it.
Correct.
That was bare bones, essential, everything had to work.
And no agency staffing.
And no agency staffing and such, so.
And we actually worked it anyway with agency staffing.
Right, at that point.
And then it all started over.
Okay, and so, I mean, those are things that you've already done and gotten close and may have to tweak. Those are the kind of things that in order to help work on this, and I think we at least now need to, to not just shut the doors and upheal, upheaval people right now. You know, we figure out in this crisis, how to cover that, some of that for you.
Well, generally at this time of year, you have people coming in. So have you had people ask about it?
Are you turning any of it away currently?
Absolutely. Absolutely are because of the bit enclosure, you cannot.
So it seems like their immediate need is they need to repeal those regulations so that they can find a way to get through their staffing issues for the next couple, three months and see if they can get this thing turned around by whatever assistance you can offer. They've got a little bit more money than what they, in, in the bank yet that they can operate.
But it's going to have to be a consistent. Because I, when Candy asked why no one knew, because it was the first month where we didn't, weren't going to have a licensed person in the building. And for, for two months, we met every single week trying, does anybody, I mean, we're on our phones, texting people we know that are nurses. And again, I'm really sorry that we didn't.
Well, you guys, I heard everything that Tim had tried and I know you have tried and exhausted it. But when you reach out to the community and talk like this, maybe there's some hope and we all feel like we want to help and, and if we can, we want to. And then if it fails, then we'll all go down with the ship. But we just failed to help.
I think each of us tried too with everyone we knew and everywhere we were and everyone we were around. But no, a meeting like this was not put together.
And the meeting is to open to the public.
There's also the reality of communicating negativity and it becomes a downward spiral. If you communicate negativity and you're not, and as all of us, I think, have tried and we continue to try to insulate the community from the reality. Because you start, well.
I'm sorry, it's one of my pet peeves.
Communication, it may be one of your pet peeves, but again, communications, communications experts will tell you, when you start communicating negative information, people say, wow, they may not be able to stand, I don't know if I want to go there. And that, that is the reality of communications.
Especially then if a loved one had a fall.
That's right.
Like, okay.
Then it turns into a gotcha.
Then I hear something and then my mom falls. And then it's like, oh. I mean, so it's like, I hear what you're saying and I res, I really do respect what you're saying.
Absolutely.
But it's, it's, it's very difficult.
So in this light, Tim, do you have people who are already moving out?
Oh, yes.
And the only reason those, those spots in the schedule for staffing is because people are willing to sacrifice their time with their families to do extra shifts instead. If it were not for that fact, those shifts, I believe, would still be open.
Yeah.
Um, how, how much is it for a resident to pay a month up here to stay in care center?
Four, five hundred dollars a month.
What, what is it a month?
Four, five hundred.
Okay, I know a person that moved up here that went to Centrilia, seven thousand a month. So that's another reason it's important to keep it here. Uh, because the property child to go to I-70 in the bigger cities, the price is going to go up.
I guess I would like to see an opportunity. And, and Tim, you know, I haven't seen all the things that you've done, but I'm sure you've done a lot. Um, but I'd like some of the numbers you're giving. I don't believe in cheating in the dark, but I would like to give it a good old college try here with a bunch of people. And if it goes down like Candy said, then we all go down together. And like I said in the beginning, if this is an intent for it to fail, so that you can declare bankruptcy and you can have a corporate, long-term pair big, so they come in and take it over, buy it up, whatever you're going to do with it, then say so.
That, that really is an answer.
There has never been any discussions about that.
Not, not with our board.
No, not with the nursing homes.
I think that would have been the, almost the easiest, and I know you guys haven't discussed that because you know, corporate comes in, they buy, they're going to bring in staff. But we don't, I don't know, I just.
The board meetings are open to the public.
Cindy, I have a question for you.
I've got to get over to the board, I'd love to hear about it. Thank you for doing this, really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Really thanks for all your interest.
I'll throw out my seat.
Applications are open today, all of them.
He's increasing, we're increasing population as we speak.
Yeah.
No, seriously.
No, I'm not.
Cindy.
I'm not joking, I'm just telling you.
Have you guys reached out to, listen, this is the way I feel to, you guys maybe fixed the staffing. Have you reached out to Lisa Steele to ask her why she quit after thirty-four years?
I don't know, uh, our director of nursing, or Tim. It seemed like we had an influx of applications and of new staffing since Tim came on board and then, and our new director of nursing. But then suddenly, the vaccine deal came out, they saw people scrambling to go other places and, or to not do it, you know, not even work there anymore. That's what I believe started our staffing issues in the last six months. And that's all I'm going to say, previous to that, I am not aware of anything because I wasn't there.
I think that you guys as the board need to reach out to many of the people, and this is kind of why I came today, because I know, you know, we can throw money at the situation, but if the staffing issues aren't fixed, it's, it's not going to happen. But the thing is, is there's many people that I've worked with that worked there so long and then said, done. That I feel like you guys need to reach out to them and say, what happened? What made you upset? What did this? Why didn't you stay? I mean, like I said, I'm beating a dead horse with Lisa, but thirty-four years, she worked there as a CNA. She was, you know, she did my CNA class, she did my Medicaid class, she did my preceptor as an LPN because I actually did do clinicals and preceptor for LPN there because I wanted to. And I feel like some of that has been overlooked on, you know, and I know you guys have been busy and I know you guys have had a horrible, you know, this weight on your shoulders. But I just don't, I think that it needs to be addressed and people need to say, why'd you quit? What happened, you know?
Well, and, and I appreciate you saying that because honestly, in a town our size, I mean, know everybody, I assume it was her mother who was a resident, passed away. And it's like, maybe I shouldn't assume.
She quit before that. She's been at the health department for a year and PRN at the nursing home monthly.
So I appreciate you speaking up because I, I assumed.
You know, I, and actually, when the DON position came open, you know, knowing we're starting new with a new administrator, and kudos to the, some of the things that Tim has done. And I hear the community blaming Tim, he's not, he hasn't been here long enough to make any kind of difference. And, you know, my dad was ready to be done. And then I said, give this guy a chance, let's see what goes on before you say, you know, thirty-two years, I'm done. You know? But I really feel like there's some things that need to be addressed before you can fix the staffing issues on why the staff isn't coming in, why it's been years that you're looking for applications.
I'm just going to say one thing, I promise I'll shut up, I talk a lot, but, uh, but one of the things that, you know, I always was of the assumption that nobody jumps on a sinking ship. And so we take some steps that are going to be positive. And like you were saying, you know, the negative, I mean, it was Dr. Kober, I guess it was talking about the negative thing. There's got to be a new day at Scotland County Nursing Home. And it's got to have some things in place that are going to make people say, you know, I know they've got Kober, but look what they're doing to traffic. I can give your mother really good care because I gave care to my mother. I, I just, and then it's not a negative.
I agree, if you do want to try to fix it, I think everybody wants to try and if there's some sort of a path charted here, you, you, we will have to say something to the community like, you know, we've come up with a plan, we, we feel like we can do something here, we haven't really engaged everyone who cares and that's what we're going to do and, um, especially at this time of the year when you have people wanting to come in because they don't want to be home through the winter. I think you have to make a commitment to say, we're going to be here till at least July first. We're going to find a way to do that. Because it is, it's, it'd be terrible for them to try to come in and then go out, you know, in February or, that's, that's terrible.
And that's something that's got to be done immediately.
Like right now.
We're already bleeding residents now. I mean, there are people that are leaving next week to go somewhere else and they're not going to ever come back. Because their family lives in another community and they stayed here for, they lived here their whole life. When they leave, they won't be.
How many people is that?
You guys are not. You're not having to deal with the reality of those nursing staff not being out there.
Excuse me, but my mother's getting relocated, so it's very re.
I have talked to facilities among facilities and there are facilities that are not admitting because they don't have staff and facilities we will not ignore unless our staff come with them. So I'm saying that that's a reality, as much as everybody here would like to see us find the staffing and continuing on, staffing is not out there.
So what you're saying is a gun deal?
I said, I have no, I have no other resources that I know of to find a staffing to get to those.
And I'm telling you, I'm helping you try to do that, I can't guarantee I can get it done. But like I said, I have three all in, that's a lot.
You know, and as far as financing, I, I mean, I don't know, for me, I would be more willing to pay some more taxes to keep something from closed. Okay, Dr. Kober said something about the school, there's a bond, didn't go, the school wasn't closing. I mean, I don't know what the money was for, but I know they put in an eight-hundred thousand dollar track, rubberized track around football field. But wait a minute, but, but this thing's closing and I think the community will back this because it's essential to this community. I think the community will back this if they need money from a bond issue, I don't know how all that works.
It would have to be a bond issue because we're at the very top of the tax levy. The tax, the taxes that the. The tax, the taxes that the constituents are paying, very generously paying, we're already at the limit.
And I'm not kicking the school, but it's not, it was closed down. If, if the school was getting ready to close down here, I think the community would have come along and supported the school too. But this place is, you know, we're, it's in a rope, and something really needs to be done here. And, and I think, I think the community will come together and support it if, if that's part of, if, if financing is part of it. I think the building out there probably needs some maintenance repair. I think it was, it's been managed together for a long time, and there's probably some things there that need to be redone. So I mean, as far as keeping this thing, I think the community, but, and, 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 I mean, I mean, it was, this came out on so quick, and it's not maybe your own fault because it came on you all quick, but I was, when I first heard about it, I was like, my dad's on the plaque out there in the care center, came into operation.
My mother is too.
Right. And that's not part of it for me, but my aunt was out there. My aunt was out there and I spent close to twenty-seven hours, probably thirty hours a week with her. And I, we can't do that, you know, none of you guys can do that if they're living thirty, forty miles away.
Do you think if you had a community meeting?
We need to.
And said, you need, you need to come to this meeting.
Are you going to be at the meeting tonight?
No.
Okay. And I thought that's what this was going to be, was a community meeting. I was disappointed that there weren't a hundred people.
Well, there wasn't a big, there wasn't a big announcement put out about this either.
I understand.
You know, but if you were going to have a community meeting, then you would want to do that. And I would be glad to participate in that.
We need to have a winter meeting and see, but I hate to see these people leaving already because they don't find a place to go right away.
We've got several families here that need to know, we need to do more track time or just like go and change the people.
And I think what you said, we can say, we can keep it open until July, would keep some of that from changing just immediately. Because right now, when it's February, they've got to go, they've got to get out of here.
Well, if I understood somewhere along the way, I don't know if this was at the very beginning, that remark was made, I mean, you will have a tax, some more tax revenue coming in, I'm guessing, after, at the end of the year, right? Or does it come every month? Yeah. So I thought someone said financially we could make it another four or five months. Did somebody say that?
I boldly made that.
You boldly made that statement.
I'm more Tim.
So the biggest problem we have is the staff. And if you're going to have a community meeting, I feel like we need to have it in the next week.
And I understand that the vaccine mandate is going to go into effect, and that probably would affect me and my business too maybe, but they, they put, uh, Eric's, our, our, our attorney general helped stop that, and that's CMS.
Separately.
We, that's quite.
Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. And, and so they wait, they put that off, but is that possibly coming back or is that?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's federal though, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, and so that.
My, my feeling is the whole thing's going to end up at the Supreme Court because it is such a overreach.
So that's something the governor's office has no control over because he's.
Not, not much, no. Not as far as CMS because that is a federal thing. I do think that he has more control than he's exercised over some of the state situations, but CMS is a federal. But it's on hold for now.
I think one of the other.
ECHO has.
I'm sorry, I have some questions. I don't know how much power I've got left. These are questions for Cindy. If you all could just let me ask them and let her answer, um, I would really, really, really appreciate it. Okay, here we go, Cindy. This is, um, this is kind of a different, um, I want to go a different direction with these questions because if, uh, I did do a big story for, I'm ECHO Menjes, I'm representing six Northeast Missouri newspapers right now and NemoNews.net. We are live on the Nemo News Facebook page. I just want to kind of talk to you, Cindy, about, um, the first kind of warning shot that I've heard of just in my kind of investigation into this story, which would have been a meeting that you had on November second in Edina. Um, this was a meeting that you and, and Tim, I believe, put together. And it's my understanding that you brought the upper echelon of the Department of Health and Senior Services with you, which I think is amazing. Um, and can you just kind of like, give us your perspective on that meeting? And, um, kind of talk about what the Department of Health and Senior Services knew as far as nursing homes being in trouble? Did they know the nursing homes were in trouble? And what do they do about it?
Nothing. Um, I didn't actually bring them with me. What, what, through conversation with people who work with the nursing homes, I was given the names of two women who have a lot to do with the reimbursement and different procedures of the nursing homes and that work in Jeff City. So I requested that they be allowed to attend that meeting. And the response was, we can't have them come to that meeting because that would set a precedent. And, you know, I didn't like that, and I let them know that. Ultimately, then, they sent the liaison over to talk to me at my office, and I strongly let him know how I felt about that. And ultimately, he ended up coming to the meeting himself.
And who was that?
Um, I've only met him that one time.
Adam, Adam Crumbless?
Adam Crumbless was there, but that's not who I'm talking about. It was Adam Crumbless and two other people. And while I appreciated that they did send people there, I did feel that nothing came from their being there. And that was my reason for asking for the two women to come. You know, I wanted someone there who is really knowledgeable about the inner workings of the nursing homes. And I feel like the state a lot of times does not want to send anybody out because they're afraid, you know, what if they give you information they don't really want you to have, or you, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
They want all the authority for everything, but they don't want any responsibility, which I find very frustrating. So, um, they did send three people. They were very courteous. I was glad they came. But I, I didn't see much come out of that.
Is there anything that you and, and other legislators of the state can do to get behind the Department of Health and Senior Services and, and, and push on more protections for our rural nursing homes and frankly, healthcare systems? You know, do they have a part to play in helping solve this problem?
Yeah, we do, of course. I mean, it starts in the House because the budget chair is in the House. They come up with a budget. This year, we have, we're going to have a massive amount of money, which everyone's talking about because everybody is saying, okay, you know, we're having this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have this additional money. And so there will be, you know, a lot of conversation about that. But yes, I mean, I'm friends with the budget chair in the House, and I routinely talk about nursing homes, sheltered workshops, places where very vulnerable people are that, you know, are really at risk for these places closing down. And sure, I mean, e- every legislator should get behind that.
So, because I, you know, in this room, there's a lot of anger, pain, sadness, you know, it's, uh, quoting a friend, it's like losing, unexpected death, uh, losing the nursing home. Is there something that the people watching now, the people that came in this room, the people that are going to watch the recording of this, um, that we can empower them to move forward? Can they make, you know, by making phone calls to legislators, by making communications to the Department of Health and Senior Services? Like, is there a direction, um, that, that you could recommend for your constituency who want to, uh, be proactive in saving what's left of the rural nursing homes in our region? Can do?
I mean, absolutely. I think people should call their legislator. Maybe there are other legislators talking about this and having this as a priority of theirs. I mean, I know everyone understands that there's a zillion issues in Jeff City, and so, you know, your, your attention to any one topic can really be kind of, it's complicated. But to me, it's not that complicated. If you say to yourself, what are the foundational things that we need to support? And where do we build from there? And to me, this, this is a foundational issue. Because if we allow all of our rural nursing homes to close, and they are all at risk of this, most of them, then we're saying elderly people that live in rural areas don't matter. And we just can't say that. We, we cannot say that and, and be any kind of a moral leader. So it's why I'm here today. I mean, it's, it's always been an issue close to my heart anyway, but I feel like if we allow one to go down, it's just that much easier to say, well, okay, it happened there, and you know, everybody made it, they went somewhere else. It's okay, it's not a big deal. It is a big deal. It's really a big deal.
And then just one more, because I know you're paying attention, close attention to what's going on in your district. Can you just talk about what you've heard from the other nursing homes in your district and, and where they're at? You know, what does it look like right now? Just.
Well, it's, it's a dire situation. I mean, the people that are trying to run the nursing homes, they're overworked, they are stressed out. You never know what's coming down the pike, it doesn't seem. Ever since COVID, it's been a nightmare. And they're all, they were financially stressed prior to that time. And one little example is when COVID hit and, you know, you had to do testing all of the time. And some of the employees had been tested, you know, literally over a hundred times. And just, you know, they're already working in a, in kind of a miserable situation. And then add that on there. Anyway, um, nursing homes were required to do things. So here's an example. All of your employees have to be tested like it just seemed like constantly. But the state was going to pay for the supplies. So they did all these tests and they put out all this money, and then they send the bill in, and when do they get paid? Who knows? I mean, it takes forever. So then I end up having to call and say, what is the holdup? Because we, we've been getting additional money now for the last couple of years. Why are these people not having their bills paid? I mean, it's a wonder anybody does any business with the state of Missouri, to be honest. Because they just withhold money and, um, so you, so you have that situation. It's just one thing after another thing after another thing. And then all of your employees have to be tested. But then somebody that's an inspector of your nursing home who was just at a home down the road, they come in and they're not tested. Now, can you explain that to me?
No.
No, I, I, it's that kind of thing. And I, and I think that we have people, we have people making rules who have all the authority, but none of the responsibility. And when you have that kind of a setup, you have something that's not going to work. So the state of Missouri is holding all of the money and all of the authority, but everybody out here has to comply with all of these rules and regulations, and yet they have no authority to change anything to make something work. And yet they're the people who are there every day, who understand the situation, and everybody's situation is a little bit different. But you have taken away from you any ability to change. So imagine that in any other job. Imagine that in farming. I mean, every day your situation changes and you have different things, and different farmers have different things that they're addressing. Well, if I was all of a sudden the, uh, king of farming, and I said, now I'm going to make the rules for all of you, and every, all of you have to go out every day and do the very same thing every day. That's what we have. That's, that's how the state operates. It's very non-responsive. And that's why I asked the two ladies to come to the meeting with the nursing home people because I felt if they sat and looked people in the eye and they heard their story and they were able to communicate, I hate Zoom, I hate that, I hate it. It is a little bit convenient at times, but, you know, you want to go and look at people. And you, you want to hear what they have to say, and you get a whole lot better understanding by doing that. So we have this big divide between the people making the rules and the people living under the rules. And the people making the rules are not held accountable for the results that happen out here. So if they make so many rules that you can't make it out here, does that, does that make any difference in their job? No. But these people out here, if you can't make it work, even though you have no leeway to, to adjust, your whole business goes down, your nursing home goes down, your residents have nowhere to go. You, you're, you're trying to comply with something that realistically, there's just no way for you to comply. And yet the people making the rules just keep churning the rules out.
It seems like such a steep.
It does.
You know, it seems like such a steep curve to have to.
It's like pushing a rock uphill, up a mountain. And that's why I'm always agitating and trying to get people from Jeff City to come out here. Come here. It's easy to listen to somebody else or, you know, someone else tell you, oh, it doesn't really mean anything or, you know, but you come out here and look, look people in the eye, see what they're facing, and help them find a solution.
I'm always commenting that Northeast Missouri couldn't be further away from Jeff City. You know, as, as far as, as much attention we get down there.
From what I can see, it's that way everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, government, state government and certainly federal government exists, it seems like, to perpetuate their jobs. And that doesn't mean everybody within it is terrible. They're not. They do have people who know how to do the job and have good suggestions, but they have a very hard time breaking through to the people running the place, so.
Uh, and just one more, I mean, because this was a very last minute. We didn't know this meeting was going to happen yesterday until, almost last night. What did you have to do to make this happen today for you to, you know, where, did you come up here from Jeff City?
Oh, no, I was at home.
You were home.
The only, the only hard part about it was that it's almost Christmas and I have family coming in and, you know, I have a lot of things to do that I haven't gotten done. But my family doesn't need anything anyway, so I've already told them, you know, if it doesn't get done, it doesn't get done.
Uh, I think it makes people feel good to see you. I, I, it makes a difference that you, uh, showed up, so.
Well, I mean, I'm hoping that we set a date, I mean, we've already lost half of our people, but I'm hoping that we set a date within the next week because people need to know. Can they, can they count on being able to be there or not? And, um, if it's sometime within the next week, except for a couple of days, I'll come back. And I mean, I think the whole community needs to come forward. And instead of people saying, I think we can help you, we're going to need people at that meeting to say, I will help you and I'm going to sign up to do it right now. It's that kind of thing.
Thank you so much. I will let you get back to talking with these guys. I really appreciate it.
It's really up to, I mean, I know that, I, I know that the nursing home, I mean, it's hard. My mother worked in a nursing home, so I, I get it. And I had one, not, not, I had residential care, but it's just, you know, it's a, a career of the heart. So it's.
It's scary, yeah, it's hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sounds like you talked about a lot of money coming in from the state.
Oh, yes.
So. Sounds like money, no money is enough to give nurses. We have a certain source of nurses.
Well, the thing about the money is, every interest in the world is going to be trying to get that money.
Right. I know.
I know you know that. And they, they know if they come in and help in this situation, there's going to be a lot of other situations that are going to need that too. Now, we have the money to do it. We do. So, you know, it just boils down to, do we, do we have a meeting? Do we have a plan? Is the county? Is the county, they're not here anymore, are they willing to step in some? They don't have a ton of money, but they do have money. Are they willing to participate? And what is our plan? It's, it'll boil down to that. You know, when I used to work for Oaks, um, when they wanted money, what they would do is they would bus all the people to Jeff City. And they would have a day when all the Oaks buses from all around the state would come in with a whole bunch of elderly people, which, you know, now I could unite all there. I need to be back, that's true. And it, it's unfortunate that sometimes you have to really make a big public relations battle out of it.
Right.
I, I made it to that way. I mean, to me, you ought to, you're a decent person, you ought to be able to get it. But that's how I did it.
I concur with Tim and board. The hospital sent out about a hundred and ninety-three letters to, I don't know if they were vaccinated or not, unvaccinated nurses, when this was coming down, we were threatened, are threatened, will be threatened. It was Chris Chirping that said, hey, we have points to comply, but we don't have, our personal board has not made a mandate that our hospital is going to have a mandate. We will comply when the government tells us to comply, but we are not complying until and before then.
Yeah.
So if your hospital has said that you have to wear, or you have to be vaccinated, you're going to jump ship, please come to us.
Yes.
Hundred ninety-three letters. Again, I do not know if these individuals were vaccinated or unvaccinated. Chris Chirping. So Tim, I, I get that.
I think what'll happen, like we said at first, or I'm afraid of what'll happen. If your nursing home closes and all of those people, you know, are out of a job, maybe they go to work somewhere else, a few of them, some of them will go somewhere else, then they'll do all their business wherever else they go. So then your stores start being hurt. And then your hospital goes down too. That's pretty much your entire community. And I feel like, I mean, I know, I know that you've done everything that you can think of doing, but I do feel like, uh, a community meeting with, listen, this is it, maybe that will make a difference. And if it doesn't, then you've done everything you can do. It has to happen like immediately.